Wayne Licklider.
Pete Delaney.
All right, we have a quorum, but we also have one member of the board who's not present, so as as a result of that, we will seat Mister Pete Delaney here for Brian Rogers. Okay, um. We'll read the agenda first. Right. Would you like to take the honor to Adam?
So first, we have the approval of the minutes for November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Next, public hearings. First public hearing on the on the docket is Z B A twenty four dash zero one three variance. Jake Chikani has requested this application for a variance to section five, article B dot one, to construct a duplex in the business district. Property is a tax map one oh two, lot eighty one, lot is on the corner of Underwood Road and Lake Street. Uh, second on the docket is Z B A twenty four dash zero one four, another variance. Jake Chikani has requested his application for a variance to section five, article B dot three, to construct a duplex within the front side and rear setbacks and on a lot under one acre size. This is the same property as I just mentioned above. After that, we have other business, including zoning board meeting schedule for twenty twenty five, that needs approval. And after that, if you have any other business which may be required, in that adjournment.
Excellent, thank you. All right, looks like we also have minutes, um. Does anyone have any comments or additions or changes that they'd like to present to the minutes?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a uh, motion to accept the minutes and it's been seconded, all those in favor? All right, the minutes have been accepted. All right, and then regional impact vote, something that um brings to the table if a application has the merit, rises to the merit of affecting the region. Um, and does anyone have?
I move that we, that there is no regional impact in in the judgment of the board.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so it's been um. All right, all those in favor of the motion. Please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Looks like unanimous. Unanimous, so uh, okay, so we have our public hearings here. Uh, Adam, would you like to uh, kick us off with the first on our agenda?
Absolutely.
Well, the second, actually, we did do the site visit today, so uh, at three thirty.
Yeah.
And now we're on to the next hearing.
First item is twenty four dash zero one three variance, uh, Jake Chikani, and do we have Jake here? Uh, and again, this application is for a variance to section five, article B dot one, to construct a duplex in the business districts. Subject property is at one oh two, lot eighty one, uh, address that's fourteen Underwood Road.
Okay. Uh, Jake, typically, um, it's, which is last name is? Chikani, Mister Chikani, um, would you like to kind of give us a rundown? I know we saw at the site visit. Uh, the location and so forth, but typically, you know, applicants give a rundown of what they'd like to accomplish here.
Well. I guess I'm. I'm at a bit of a loss as um. It. This kind of comes to my attention that the site plan. Um, the site plan that is included in that package would be really sufficient, nor did it follow uh, the driveway regulations and I am. I guess I'm, I'm hoping the board would continue the application until next month. So that I can actually, so that I can put more time into the site than I can actually have a shot at. This fair. Does that? As it is in your package today, um. I don't think it's. Doesn't seem like it has a very, a very good chance of being approved. So I guess I'm, I'm asking the board.
Okay, so um. Applicant has requested a extension on this application or move to the next scheduled meeting. Is there any discussion on the board as to?
Just some background here, uh, this is January twentieth is our next meeting. Uh, that is still within the ninety day period, uh, to make a decision. Um, as per RSA six seventy four thirty three, um, eight. Um, and I can read that RSA, the board wishes. After that date is, it is outside the ninety days, but January twentieth is still within the ninety day period to act.
Okay.
That's just for back. The beginning date is November first, when he submitted, yeah. Yep, so we would have until roughly February first, if that's exactly ninety, but it's probably.
And so our next scheduled meeting is the fourteenth, you said?
Uh, the twentieth of January.
The twentieth.
Uh, well, so withdrawing has some, some downsides. Um, one of the downsides is you don't recoup the cost of the application, uh, so that's always a concern. Um, I think at the core, it's a good application. It would be a better application with a good site plan. Um, and so an extra month to get a site plan solidified, um. Would be a good application, but that's not really for me to speak about. So I think the, besides the site plan, it is a good application, uh, fundamentally, it's complete. It has all the required information. Um, so. Stuff for the board to decide if uh, another month for a good site plan is, is worthy, but um, again, we are within the ninety day period to act even at our next meeting, so I think it would be acceptable.
If um. As I look at this, it, it's not going to change the need for a variance.
Correct, no.
There's no way that, that what he's proposing in terms of building size, whatever, would fit on the lot without it has to be for variance, so that's.
The variance would stand, yeah, the variances would stand. The need for them would stand, yeah.
Both variances.
Exactly, yeah.
There's no way. Well, I can see, no, I can't see that.
Yeah, yeah, but both variances would, would stand, uh, just it would be a, a new site. From what I gather, Jake, does that sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I think whoever was at the uh. Whoever walked the property saw that there isn't really. Yeah, there's no, there's no spot on the property, eight, well, one of the variances. You know, is, is required for the duplex if it's not permitted use. And then the question of the setbacks, if you saw the site. Um, there isn't a spot on property that can conform to the, to those setbacks from the rear.
So. So my other question is, um. The first variance is asking for the right to build a duplex in the business district, and that's independent of the site plan, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So i- is that something that we could decide tonight? And if we did decide tonight, one way or another, it would both encourage him or discourage him from coming back to the board. I'm, I'm, I'm saying is, if we don't need the site, if he's talking about redoing the site plan, and we don't need the site plan to decide the first variance. Maybe we should consider the first variance and. And then, if, if it's a positive result, continue with till, till the next meeting. I'm, I'm just saying, we're here, we don't, we're not getting more information about whether a duplex is appropriate here in the, in the uh. In the uh, business district. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
Fair enough, fair. Any other, any other thoughts on the board members here as to the request of the applicant?
I think it would be reasonable to do the first one tonight if that's what the applicant wishes.
Yeah, the, the, the first one is already hindered by the incompleteness of the second one. I mean, you're less likely to approve a duplex for some, for someone who has a, you know, a site plan and anything completely or is presenting themselves to be involved in the site life or something, so. You know, I, I. I guess it's not for me to decide, I don't know, but, but I think, I think uh. You might have, you know, uh, more rosy alabanza.
Okay, so do you?
I, I would make a motion, um, based on his, his request, which is certain, uh, within reason to continue the next meeting.
I'm sorry, you're, you're moving to?
I'm moving to, to move these, this application the way it stands with, you know, with the upgrades that he's requested.
A continuation.
To continuation to our.
Your, your, that's your motion. Okay.
All right, motion's been made.
Okay. I'll second that.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of uh, Ann's motion, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hey.
Okay. All right, so the motion's been made to continue this application to our next scheduled meeting on January twentieth. Um, with the caveat that the uh, site plan would be completed and so forth to your uh, to your needs. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Next month. Thanks, Jake.
Well, I just, we, we can talk procedure real quick if you want. If, so, what, what was your question, sir? This is a limit we can get into. And for you, just for uh, for Beverly's uh, record, could you state your name?
Jerry Smith?
Jerry.
J E R R Y. I'm sorry.
Jerry Smith, J E R E M.
Okay, thank you.
This isn't part of the public hearing.
No, oh no.
Yes, sir, if you can hold your comments until January twentieth, uh, we'll, we'll consider all comments then.
Can we, can we just say procedurally that the first, the first uh, question we ask for variance is whether variance could be granted without being contrary to the public interest?
Yeah.
Which would fit things like property values.
Yeah. As I, I, please, I, I, I know it's a, I know it's kind of annoying to have to come to one meeting and then another meeting, and now I have to come into a third meeting. Uh, but I, 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 your time is valuable and I appreciate you being here.
So I would just, they asked me by the questions?
No, absolutely, um, it's just, it's, it's better that we just hold all questions until the hearing, that would, we just have it all captured in the minutes. Um, and please, uh, feel free to send my office any uh, type comments or letters you, you may have concerns about, and I can bundle that into the packet as well.
But would I be correct that his, that the packet is on the website?
It is, yep.
So. Um, maybe you could give him information about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That way, you can actually go normal check us or we go by.
And you guys, you guys have a lot of options to send me a letter in support.
Thank you, we are interested in your comments. Okay, um, well, this covers both these variances, right? I mean, we're, okay, and then so other business.
It means that's um, yeah, just the schedule for uh.
Didn't you want to read something else as well?
Oh, yes, um, I, I mainly just wanted to re-review RSA six seventy four, uh, thirty three. Um, for the purposes of this very application, um. I'm gonna read it, um, and if you guys have any questions on it, um. We can forward all these questions to uh, Cordell, our legal counsel. Uh, that way, we're conducting these meetings in, in a legal manner going forward, which, not saying we haven't been, but I just want to keep it in that direction, so, uh, six seventy four thirty three, uh, specifically section eight. Upon receipt of any application or action pursuant to this section, the zoning board of adjustment shall begin formal consideration and shall approve or disapprove such application within ninety days of date of receipt. Uh, in this particular case, that was November first, uh, provided that the applicant may waive this requirement and consent to such extension as may be mutually agreeable, uh, to the board, which you guys mutually agreed on that extension to next meeting, so. Um, if a zoning board of adjustment determines that it lacks sufficient information to make a final decision on an application and the applicant does not consent to an extension, the board may, in its discretion, deny the application without prejudice. Uh, in which case, the applicant may submit a new application for some or substantially similar requests for relief. So if you guys were to not deny any application for lack of information, that would be without prejudice, meaning they could reapply for the same uh, application. So. Just wanted that, uh, that section in the ordinance is very applicable to your jobs and um. Yeah, just figured I would read it, I want to try to do some training, uh, once in a while.
Adam, you know, I just want to be sure I understood it.
Yeah.
Um, it seemed to say that if the applicant agreed, we could extend the period beyond ninety degrees, ninety days.
Yes, yes, that, that is what it has to be mutually agreed.
Mutually agree.
So as you guys both come to an agreement, um, yeah.
Okay.
Might not always be for the applicant's best interest, but if you guys both feel like it's agreeable, then.
That has to be a joint decision.
Has to be a joint decision, exactly. Okay, hope you guys get some use out of uh, this, if you guys want me to clear up any other uh, RSA topics, happy to do so. And if you guys want uh, me to confer with Cordell or anything, I can do that as well.
Okay. So is there any other business on our agenda? You said something about.
Last page of the packet.
So uh, let, let's do the twenty twenty five meeting schedule first. Uh, last page of the package, please, um. Looking ahead to twenty twenty five. I tried to take into account holidays, um, there are some things I could have missed, um, just. I was, I've been the only one looking at this though, so. I, I don't know, if I miss something, I probably won't catch it. Um, so if you guys want to briefly look over these dates, uh, if they are acceptable to you. Then we can go forward, and again, we can always change this, if these, if you guys find something wrong with these dates in the future, we can adjust them.
Well, we have to do it a, a month ahead of time.
Yeah, exactly, so you better catch it a month ahead of time. Um, and just a quick, I guess.
These are on the dates themselves?
Uh, yeah, so the left column is the meeting date, the right column is the application deadline, one, uh, I got Saint Patrick's Day here. Um.
Which day is that?
It's March, March seventeenth, not that that's a national holiday or all, but.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so. I, I, it, it doesn't affect me at all, but, but January twentieth is Martin Luther King.
Oh, are we, we're working on that?
Seventeen is first and.
Why I need someone else to look at these?
I'm fine with it, but I just wanted to point out, I don't know, people go away on.
If it wasn't on my uh, calendars, having it off, I didn't.
Those are town holidays, uh, some of them.
Uh, I think you're right on.
They're town holidays, and the town is closed officially. I don't remember presidency because I know people take off their snowmobile weekend.
Sure. But I don't think we posted.
January twentieth is Martin Luther King inauguration.
That.
Like, again, I don't have a problem with it, but I just. Point that out.
I'm not sure that's holiday in the way of.
I, it's hard to say, our, our calendars aren't updated for twenty twenty five.
Massachusetts is, but not the way.
Why rush?
Why rush, exactly.
The only consideration, if I may, is that if you want someone to set up this meeting hall. You're asking someone to work on a day and they're supposed to be off, if it's Martin Luther King Day and the town is officially closed. Because usually, and, and somebody from the Andal, usually sets up this setup, setup, and it has to be set up because there may be a party going on the previous Saturday. So asking her to come in on Monday when it's a holiday and set it up for the Z B A meeting, it might be a little bit much. That's up to you guys.
And from a point order, I mean, on national holidays and so forth, or, or, or holidays that the, the city pays, can we have? Meetings. I'm just asking the question, I've never.
I don't believe.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Town is officially closed.
For close, for close.
Exactly.
Including exterior meetings, yeah, okay.
I, I tried to have a. Fire department meeting, Veterans Day, but this was too much, so we. Because I didn't get anybody to tell me I couldn't, but it was very much discouraged.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Town Hall was closed on Martin Luther King Day last year, so I think it's safe to assume that it will be closed this year.
They have given you an employee scheduling for twenty twenty five holidays.
So, um. Don't pay attention to it, uh, well enough.
So is there an alternate night that we should choose now rather than?
I would lean toward uh, the following Monday.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seven, does that stick, still stay within our ninety day window?
I won't be able to be here, but.
Yes, it does.
At least the third Monday, September one?
Yeah. Uh, so we got also the ninth, last, last night.
I think in the past, you're right, I think because the, the meetings, if they fell on a holiday. I believe they used the following Monday, which was the fourth, because there's nothing else planned by the town, there are no other meetings planned on that Monday, the fourth, so you have that as a, as a fallback.
Fourth of.
The fourth Monday.
Oh, the fourth Monday, I see, yeah.
So the first Monday has.
I know that where, well.
Yes, you do, so the fourth is a free day, uh, in that respect.
So the twenty seventh could be a.
You could need that, if it was agreeable to the members.
The Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, due to Martin Luther King Day, we push that.
And, and for.
It's probably saved by the.
I probably won't be able to be here on January twenty seventh.
I'm hesitant to do the thirteen, because that gives people less time, not more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
One with the other direction.
Yeah.
But if you make it January twenty seventh, then we're beyond the ninety days.
Uh, first.
That's true.
I don't know if we're beyond the ninety days, November first.
I don't know about that.
November first, December first.
Thirty days, thirty days to ninety, sixty.
We're, we're.
We're still okay.
We're still okay. We're okay, but if it doesn't happen on that meeting, we need to figure something.
Or we might be uh, using that second line, the RSA document there.
Yes, uh, so twenty seventh would be, I mean, it would be.
Unfortunately, the applicant just left, but he'll be notified, I'm assuming.
Yes, okay.
Seems like you guys are in touch.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I'm free the twenty seventh, I don't have, so I know you're.
I won't.
We've got to do it on some day, fortunately, um.
So the town of Swansea have, uh, observes Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, both of them. Seventeen.
I didn't know we observed.
But it, it just doesn't give the dates, it just says that, uh, it observes the following holidays.
But the seventeenth is the one right between the twelfth and the twenty second, so that's, that's why it's there, right?
And then Saint Patrick's Day, let's go for that. See if you had every single one. It's Easter Monday.
There's only Saint. This is what happens, my calendar's not updated.
That's the day I feel it's, it's considered Easter Monday, but that's it.
Well, we don't have that day off.
Now, so we're coming.
We'll be here, just like we don't have Saint Patrick's Day off, so we're coming. Uh, February, though, where your town's closed, uh, welcome bump it.
Be bumping into the twenty fourth? Can't make that one either. On town.
So twenty fourth of February. And the application deadlines will be adjusted to show. Another really quick note about this is that application deadlines are, uh, three weeks out instead of ten days out. To be in line with other, our, our other application deadline dates.
Okay.
So instead of ten days, they, they now have to submit their application three weeks in advance.
Okay.
Which is a bump by four days.
Will you send me the corrected calendar like you did last time?
Yep.
Yeah.
So our first, we're moving to the twenty seventh. The January twenty seventh. And February is moving to the. Twenty fourth. Irish people.
We'll have the updated calendar in the minutes.
Yeah, I'm just for my own verification. And I will post these dates extra early. Just so people have some time. My kid is still leaving school, I shouldn't know.
This is not something we're voting as a board, correct?
Well, this is why I brought it, just so we could catch stuff like this.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it doesn't require a motion or a a vote to, to accept, okay?
I think we're talking about it, that Adam implemented.
Yep. And then it goes on the website.
All right. Any other business to discuss?
That you. Do we have somebody?
We do, yeah, Mister Joe Parisi.
Yes.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, uh, he has expressed an interest in joining as an alternate. So. You want to tell us a bit about yourself?
So this, uh, one of home property down for three years moved to town as my residence, uh, last year. Uh, formerly lived in Chesterfield. Uh, retired, was vice president of engineering at Martin. Uh. Um, here, based on the note that was in the newsletter of this board meeting and uh, meeting about peers and all of this, so that's why I'm here. I have some available experience, and when I moved to Chesterfield, I was serving my eleventh year on the planning board, in my third year on budget committee. Previously, also served on Z B A for two years. But I think I, I would say I got some available experience. I've got the time, gets my time, and certainly more, I'm able to contribute of my time and talents as they did to, you know.
I appreciate your interest and your desire. Always looking for good people to help, you know, we told the, told the line here. Yeah, now he's president of the.
And we have one, one vacancy for an alternate, you might be it.
I was hoping my urgently seeking applicant was, was underlined.
Underlined everything, yeah.
Again, I served on the, um, total of fifteen years on campus, I understand.
So, thank you so much for coming.
And November, it could be my rep.
For a very short period of time, because Fran talked me into doing something that was not quite what it ended up being. But yes.
It's a different job.
It was a different job.
Well, and just from some basic insights to the board, um, you know, I've seen, we've experienced other zoning boards and other cities and so forth, and how they, um, they run their meetings, but the alternate positions, at least in Swansea are very much involved in the discussions and so forth, whether or not that alternate is sat in a particular seat or not. So we're very open to discussions, not a sidelined position by any, by any stretch of the imagination. So, um, I find that to be a extremely beneficial aspect to, to lean on everyone's experience and knowledge. You know, to discuss these applications, so, um. I really welcome your interest.
Well, that's good to hear, because, uh, no, that's. I attended a few planning board meetings, that did seem pretty good, as, you know, all of this were um, were basically all, like, minimal. It didn't seem to be interacting as a, as a member of the board.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not what I'm used to, because I started out, man check the field on voting board, that and all. And that being engaged is way to learn.
Exactly, absolutely. I mean, the only thing an alternate would not do in a particular meeting would be voting, that would be the, but up to that point, you know, input, discussions, questions. It's, it's, um, it's interactive. Any training, any training opportunities, we'll send your way. Yeah. Town pays for training, so. Uh, if there's any N H M A training, uh, that you want to go to, we'll send it your way.
Most of that online now, or you got to go to conference?
Oh, no, uh, Jay, Jay and I just went to one a couple of months ago. Yeah.
But it, um, they, there was some, there was some, uh, option to do it remotely too. And in during COVID, I went to one remotely. Um, and my experience as an alternate was that I was seated almost every time.
Yeah.
So we need alternates.
That happens.
And, and Pete's only been here for one meeting as a, as an alternate, and here he is seated, so.
Yeah. But the board's pretty responsive, I mean, most of the members and so forth are, have, are committed to it and, and do show up and come to all the meetings. But, um, you know, that, there is a position, even though we're talking about the, you know, the dates here, where, you know, life happens. Where, you know, life happens and so we need alternates to fill those positions, so that we can do the best we can for the town.
Absolutely.
Well, thanks for coming, Joe.
And his next step is to go to the select board?
Uh. His next step is to go to the clerk, uh, for a local office, I'll send you an email tomorrow.
I have done an application.
Oh.
That's specific to Z B A.
Okay, um, I'll send you an email tomorrow, uh, the clerk will have an oath of office ready for you. Maybe on Wednesday.
And that would be for web purpose?
For the alternate position in the Z B A, alternates are different than regular members in what they require. Um, so all you require is an oath of office with the clerk. Um, you don't need to be voted in.
Does he need to the select board?
Nope.
No.
Nope. Yeah, you just say you're you're interested in the, I mean, I'll 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 talk to them tomorrow to make sure that they're ready. Yes, I was talking to Mike about it, uh, when I mean, we're doing doing with uh, pizza at the office, they don't have to do anything.
Well, the oath of office is swearing in.
Yeah, sorry, it's 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 not the select board, it's just an oath of office.
Well, that's what I was talking about, sworn by the.
By the clerk, yeah.
By the clerk, yeah, that's exactly what I was.
Sorry, sorry.
So I don't need to be voted on by this body or the select board?
Uh, you still need to be approved by this body.
Yes, but not the selecting.
Yep.
And if that happened after, I'm confused.
I move that we. Uh, encourage Joe to apply as an alternate for the zoning board of adjustment.
All those in favor?
Your hours. Uh, tomorrow, you can tomorrow, yeah, I think you can get something together pretty quick, so. Uh, afternoon, though. Yeah, I I'll send you an email tomorrow morning, uh, with some more details.
Yeah, I know, I know the.
That that fills us up, look at that. This was beyond my hopes and dreams for this.
We have our chair and one of the alternates missing tonight, so.
Yeah.
That will give us three alternates and the five members.
I was expecting to do some heavy recruiting in like February, but. This is great. Yeah, yeah, look at that, well, fantastic, well, welcome aboard.
Looking forward to seeing you on uh, January twenty-seventh. Okay.
So we got bodies.
I mean, it's Pete most likely going to fill in for me.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, thanks, Joe.
Okay. Any other business that we're.
Up in my office.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to.
I will need the partners that were here, they're really uninterested, I will need to verify.
Um, so we'll do our regular notice notification process, uh, in three public places, the website. And I have their information, so I'm just gonna call them. Along with uh, uh, Ms. Liddell, is she here?
Snow.
Snow, I I know, I'm sorry, I I keep saying.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary.
If a, if a, if a meeting is, an application is continued, then the. The first notice stands, especially if the people have come to the meeting, they know that the meeting is continued and it's publicized.
They don't know when it's continued, but. But we just changed the date, they were here, they left before.
So, um, uh, so snow is also gonna be, I'm I'm gonna call them separately because I feel bad.
Proceedally.
Proceedally, I'm talking about the fact that if a application is continued, you do not have to send out all the first notices like you did the first time.
Yeah, so le- legally, we don't need to do notices again, but we still be.
Because it's changed.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, because we changed the date.
Right, that's the only reason.
Yeah, yes. But if it was a regularly scheduled, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
So a motion has been made to adjourn, is there a second? It's been second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.